Tomorrow.
Welcome, everyone.
The.
Welcome.
Did Melissa, she's not coming or?
She said she would be here.
Okay.
She might be late.
Okay. Right, at this time, I'd like to call this special meeting the township board of trustees to order on Friday, October 27, at 3:00 PM for the purpose of a work session. I will call the role, Asherall.
Here.
Sweattick here. Trustee Augustine is not here yet. So I guess the first thing we want, I'd like to look through with the employee manual. You okay with that?
Okay. Or do you want to do so the ladies can leave? They wanted to join in with the.
Discussion was.
That's what I'm saying. She wanted to bring that up. Do you know what she wanted to say?
Well. I'm okay. To jump ahead just a little bit, and if we want to wait, then we can wait.
Okay.
Um, but so the public knows what we're discussing is the Google Drive. Again, having this conversation, I've spoken to both of the ladies in the front office and um, they. And correct me if I'm wrong, both of you, uh, you tried it once with the records request that came in and it actually was simpler because should you receive the same records request again, now you can just send someone the login information. But the concern is um, setting parameters. Suzanne, you were concerned about parameters, like how long will the record remain in the Google Drive and what goes into it, right? Because we said not, not every single records request, but the large records requests that we're going to have. That's where you want to be able to say, okay, here it is. So when someone's requesting this, here's the login. So you can get in there and see the information. I mean, I know that I just spoke with Chief Sutner again, and they just had another record for the same records request that has come in multiple times, and it would have been simpler because he said he's getting it. And I said, well, doesn't Suzanne have everything? So if we had that on the Google Drive, it would be simpler to just say, here's the login. So you can get it right away.
And that particular request, I think, was somewhat different. So I'm not going to assume that it's the same. Because there might be additional information that might not have existed in the first responses to the one that was requested.
Okay.
So this.
Difference is, I, you can't assume that what is already out there is.
You need to, you need to use this. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, use the microphone. Otherwise, I'll get yelled at. Come on, there's plenty of seats. Come on, sit up.
Everybody could come sit up. Like, we literally have a seat for every single person in the audience.
For you.
Okay.
So.
All right. Well, I have a really loud voice. I mean, my UPS days, you know.
Package here.
Our voices are always carried.
You wanna um.
Well, you sat where there was no microphone, so. Okay, so I'm assuming.
Who's taking minutes? Are you taking minutes?
Taking minutes, yeah. I'm assuming that you're familiar with Google Drive. To us. Yes. So let me ask you this, and Suzanne and I had a discussion the other day. You have a Google Drive and inside it are folders, and you create, can create a hierarchy in there, correct?
Right, there is, you can, viewers only, you can have editors, that kind of thing.
About how you're structuring it. It's very similar to a file structure on the computer, correct?
Pretty much. I mean, it's just a lot of it is just you just like click and drag the files you want for that particular thing.
But it's like folders and subfolders. And, and then, then do you have the ability to restrict access to any and all folders?
That I don't know, but I would assume it is. Um, but what, when you give that person access to the Google Drive, you set them up as like an editor of viewer only, so that they can either.
We can just make it, you can, you can peek.
And it's individual email addresses that you share the Google Drive with.
Okay.
So it has to be an email address, a valid email.
Somebody could ask and say, can I have access?
Yes.
See, for me, in, in the discussion I had here is, is I said, I don't care if anybody wants to look through my entire computer. There is nothing in here that I don't care that anybody sees. With that being said, is it a burden to create a folder? Because I would, I would, my first thought was, you do a public records request, dump it into that folder, then if somebody else asks for it, you can give them access to it, and they can see it.
The, the only, the, one of the only issues with that is Google Cloud Storage. If you exceed a certain storage, and we don't know the specs on it, because we did send an email to our Google, um, G, our Gmail guru. Um, and we haven't heard back from him yet, but.
So you could exceed the capacity.
You could exceed the capacity, and then the problem is, is you have to pay for that additional cloud storage.
Okay.
So that's, that's a caveat there.
Okay.
Isn't it taking up a lot of storage on the computer also to keep it?
It's on the NAS, so it's, I mean, I, I, we have a lot of storage for, on the NAS, but I don't know.
In general, aren't, aren't the bulk of these PDF documents that are, you know, a couple kilobyte? Yes, no?
Some of them. I mean, I don't know. I'm not a, I don't know all.
I think it's only when you get into like video recordings that it, yeah. So maybe we can treat those differently that you set those aside as an addendum to it and say, you know, video recordings are available if necessary.
Yeah. I don't know how big the one that we got just recently was. I don't, I don't remember how big it ended up being, the one on the that was just recently requested, that we filled like from, the one from 10/11.
Yeah, um, it was probably 400 pages-ish.
Well, what I would like to say is that we move forward with it as a test bed at this point. You know, load what you think into there, and then if something comes in, then you can obviously, you know, put it out there that somebody, if somebody else could sing, give them access to it to see. For some of the things I and the others may have a different opinion. I was like, you know, if there's something in there, leave the whole thing open for available for viewing if they want it. That's my opinion.
Okay, we have a couple of questions with that, um, as far as records retention, and I'm gonna toss it over to Suzanne, but um, we were doing as a test, and we were thinking that, you know, we leave it up there for a month or two months for that person to access, and it's individual persons have to request access. Because we have to allow that when we give the permissions to the, the individual person that asked for it. We have to have their email address to add for it. No? I'm, I'm seeing a no.
No, a public, a public, a public records request, you can, is can be anonymous. You don't have to provide any identifying information.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's why, that's why my thought process was, you put it in there, it's available to view. It's no different, as I explained to Suzanne, it's no different if you hand somebody a hard copy, they can make a copy of it and share it anywhere they want. You give it to them electronically, same thing. All we're doing is providing access to that response to the request.
Which is what we had discussed last week when I spoke to both of you when we conference then speaker. Is that, you know, what happens to it after the fact, the burden of responsibility no longer falls on us. The burden of responsibility for us is providing what is requested of, of the requester. I mean, not even the resident, anybody can do it, so.
Another thing that I was talking to, um, a person who's very knowledgeable um, in regard to, um, as far as if you allow access to that particular email address, and something happens with that person's out of this township's email address, like let's say it's, you know, it's got viruses attached to it, shows up on the black web. I asked him, because he's a security back, he's got a security background, he's got a cloud background and all that. And basically what he said was is, we do run a little, we as a township, run a little bit of risk uh, factor in that if they have their email address and it shows up on the dark web, or it shows up and gets viruses attached to it, whatever, on their computer, we do run a little bit of a risk, is what he said. Um, with that Google Drive becoming corrupted because of that. So that's just another tossing it out there, just so you guys know. Not a real big risk, but.
Is that a risk if you don't require an email?
I would think it would be, but I don't think it is per, per.
To just view?
Yeah, I don't think it is. I think it's just.
Yeah.
If you allow them access via email.
That's why I'm saying that I, I think that, you know, if you have something that, that you assemble those documents for and put them in a file there. Tell the respondent that they're there, they can view them from there, I mean, the Requester. And/or you provide them the documents traditionally, but also put them there for viewing if they want. And if somebody else looks at them, so be it. It's, again, it's a public record, and someone has already requested it. So if we want to run that as a test bed, I would be fine with that, you know, see, see how it's working out, see what kind of memory you're using up. Um, and then if it becomes a problem, then we can revert, but I don't, I don't see, I, I think in the, in the end it would be easier that if somebody's able to see it and go, this is exactly what I need. I don't need to ask these women again and bother them. You know, move on, or if there is something missing from there, they can specifically ask for something additional. I think I've said my piece.
So the only, there's a couple of things that, um, when Lynn and I were trying to do the test, we came, like, as you mentioned, Monique, the expiration of the record, how long do we keep it out there? Um, do we create some sort of disclaimer that has a cover sheet to the record where it states specifically what the request was? With a timeframe of this record is from 2023 to 2024, um, with a summary.
That would be good from a bookkeeping perspective alone, you know, that you know that that's what's there.
I think this was my idea that I bounced off of both of you. Um, I would say if we have parameters set up for like a three months, like this will remain for three months. Unless requests continue to come in for it. If requests continue to come in for it, then it makes sense to leave it up there longer. A record, I mean, you can request a record, you know, five, from five years ago, if we still have it, right? But we have a two-year records retention policy. So just because something may be removed after three months does not mean that it's no longer available. It just means it's not available on the Google Drive. Unless the requests continue to come in for it. Um, like the police thing was a perfect example of that, because you had a lot of records requests for that, and then you had nothing for like six months, right? But then they start coming in again, so it would be helpful to just load those on there. So I was thinking, um, like maybe a three-month, six-month, whatever you're thinking, because you're thinking about storage and things like that. If we want to just say it will be up there for three months. And then after three months, if the record requests have stopped, then we'll remove that one. And maybe we'll have times where we have nothing on the Google Drive. It's because we're not getting them, they're not coming in.
Yeah.
It's, what do you think?
It's a tool, yeah, I, you know, and if it, if it benefits us in some form, I think it's a good thing, I mean.
And, and we talked about like a case by case or discretionary based on the size and number of requests. Um, I just lost my train of thought. Um.
The, um, what we had talked about earlier with the, like, your record retention schedule, like there's no.
Right, so the RC2, it only shows like a paper format um, for public records requests, and that's something that we'll have to probably work with, um, Martha, to have that updated. Um, because if everything's digital and the records retention only says paper format, then that digital record will have to be maintained. So that's one.
But we also, we currently fulfill records requests for some people digitally, just they don't want them paper copy, they just want them electronically.
Correct, yes.
How's that, so how's that different?
As far as the record retention.
Right.
Um, you have, it's a two-year period.
Right.
And then as long as it's been through an audit process, then the records retention says any paper copies you can get rid of, but it doesn't address digital or electronic.
Okay.
So that will be something that we'll just have to.
But, so that's something that's already out there right now, because it has not been addressed, because we've fulfilled many records requests digitally already.
Right.
Okay.
So, oh, based on the, um, size or number of requests, Lynn and I were talking, and we said, you know, if it would create more than two emails to respond with the PDF, then we would put it on the drive. If it was less than two emails that would contain the data, then it would just be maintained as a digital email format. Because it would be small, like what?
Yeah, but I, I, I like the idea of it being there if somebody wants, instead of having to, again, contact the township and do public records request, if they can just see it there without having to interact further.
I'll have to do more studying on Google Drives. I have to do more studying on it, because I don't know all, all that it can do and what's the limitations of it. So I do have to do that, because I, I'm asking my has been, and he's letting me know, because I don't know everything there is to know about Google Drive, so. But.
But wouldn't it be less limitations if it's smaller? If, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying even smaller ones to.
Yeah. Just create a file and put it up.
Frequently requested.
Well, yeah, if it's frequently requested, that's when we can utilize the Google Drive. I mean, that, that makes sense. Um, but if it's just a one, one-shot deal, and, you know, it's not asked again, then it's really isn't a point to put it on the Google Drive.
Well, and one of the reasons that I went in that direction as well was that Suzanne had mentioned something about somebody in the township having something, Hinckley TWP at something or other, maybe pretending to be the township, where if we had our own depository of documents, if I'm wondering about some, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna go right to the township to see it. That's, that's one of the issues that I have.
Yeah, that makes sense. That does.
So I would say that in light of Lynn's comments of needing additional information, um, but I would still use it as a test bed from what you've done so far.
Okay.
Okay.
Have you had any other requests from the one that you did that not yet?
No.
Okay. So we're gonna do it as a test. Make life easier. You look sad about it. Make life easier.
It's just been a long day.
Been a long month.
Thank you guys for coming up. I appreciate it. Um, so this is.
Like, I gotta stay on doing minutes, so. Have a good weekend, Suzanne.
Thank you too. Happy Halloween.
Happy Halloween.
I wore orange.
I wore crossbones.
So in the, in the, uh, policy manual, I had mentioned that I extracted the drug and alcohol policy to create it as its own.
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to putting in there. After looking at it, I mean, I can put it back in if we want to do that, because either way, updating it would require us to um, make an amendment of some sort, whether it's this or that or that. Um, but I think I still like this as a separate document, if you're okay with that.
Well, this is its own separate document, then can also be issued to the union employees as well, correct?
No, it has to be modified, because union employees have different, uh, fire and police have different, so.
Okay.
But it can be utilized to, you know, the information here can also be utilized to create what they have, you know. So I don't know, did you have a chance to read that over at all? Basically, it's the information that was in the manual. Um, and it will tell you the things that I changed in here. Okay.
Page four.
Page four, yes. Um. Talked about attachment A, which I, is the, uh, sign-off sheet, which I created and put in the back there.
I saw that.
Um, then this information here was extracted from the fire one. And I believe that this, this, the note that was deleted before the board grants our town must sign the blah, blah, blah. I think that this document is the drug and alcohol agreement. So that's why I pulled that out, but I inserted the language from the fire one, which addresses the use of counseling, you know, policy constitutes a condition employment township reserves right to offer employees seeking assistance participation in an approved rehab or drug abuse assistance program as an alternate to discipline. And then if such program is offered, accept and accepted by the employee, the employee must satisfactorily participate as a condition of continued employment or service. So that is one. I think there was another that's back in the other manual. Um, item 11, compliance with the Drug Free Workplace Act, federal drug police. There used to be something in there about see the attachment, and I believe that was pulled from FIRE at some point by the woman who drafted this for us.
Okay.
FIRE doesn't have anything extra.
Okay.
So I think just listing item 11 compliance, that's our statement that we certify it will provide the drug free.
Okay.
So I pulled that out. And that, I believe, are the only changes that I made to this. And if we are in agreement, I will, uh, give this to prosecutor's office to review to make sure.
So the only, um, the only thing that I wanted to discuss was, um, the township trustee signing it also versus a department head.
Do you want a department head to sign as well?
I mean, well, not as well, but.
Instead of.
Instead of. What do you think?
Well, this is the board of trustees policy.
Okay.
That's the reason that I, and, and the department head has to sign, do one as well.
I, I just, I feel that if, if it's going to be the township trustee and the employee's signature, it should be the trustee handing them this, and
Okay.
You know what I mean? Like, not like, here you go, the department head gives it to you, sign it, and then it'll come to a trustee to sign, you know? I feel that's part of us ensuring that they received it and that they reviewed it. You know, they don't have to read through it right away, but it's, you are committing to me by signing this and me signing this, that you're going to review it, and you will abide by.
Okay.
So this will be something that, um, the trustees will give. So like, I'll do FIRE, you'll do police.
Yeah.
As a general rule. Okay. No, you won't do police, because they're union.
I'll do service.
You'll do service.
All right, then back to the manual itself. So you probably note that I restructured it to say excluding firefighters, because they have to have their own. They're special. In a good way. Um, I put in no, and I made some other changes in here that are just formatting.
Hold on, I got Zoom all over my file right now. Let me. Should have brought my mouse. There it is. All right.
And I will go in, I'm gonna put page references in here for each of these topics as well.
Okay.
Um, I changed some of these um, chapter titles to agree with what they are inside the manual.
Okay.
Because that was a little off. Let's go down to the acknowledgement page. I'm gonna move that to the end.
Where is that?
That is about the fourth page. It's right up at the top. No, up at the top, up at the top. Keep going, keep going. Isn't it there?
Oh.
Come down a little.
I see. I see.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
So.
What did you just say about moving something to the end?
The acknowledgement receipt page.
Thank you.
Um, it references township policy procedures and benefits, including policies on antirassism, but it also says substance and drug abuse and rehabilitation drug. If, if that's in a new.
That should be removed.
That should be removed. So I will take that out. And the rest of that is straightforward.
Okay.
Uh, 1.2, it was restructured to exclude FIRE. And then I added the line about employees, um, covered by the manual required to read, sign the acknowledgement. 1.3, I separated that out and created that as the disclaimer.
Okay.
But the text did not change. 2.1, employee classifications, I just, you'll see certain areas in here, this is one of them where.
You added in the word.
Added in the word, yeah, so that. Um, and I don't know if you've got highlighted for the one point. I highlighted some things as a reference to myself, that it's a reference to somewhere else in the document. I just wanna, when I highlighted it, so I go in and look and make sure that the, uh, the reference is correct.
Okay.
Uh, we changing his and her to their most places. It's a lot of grammatical stuff. Uh, 2.4, out of the word policy to agree with the table of contents.
Okay.
2.6, employees and relatives, I added stepchild, because we had done that in other places.
Oh, good catch.
Changed down, and 212, I just changed some.
ABC.
Yeah, ABC. Uh, 213 is the travel reimbursement policy. And these policies, um, these are the ones here, we got a travel reimbursement, uh, cell phone. These I will take and include in the manual when I assemble it, so it'll be part of that. They'll be tabbed in there.
Okay.
I could do that, or I could include them as exhibits, but I think if I just put them in the back, if we update these, these things now say the current version of. So if this is updated, then I don't have to update this whole document too. So these will stand, same thing with the drug and alcohol, it'll stand as a separate policy. Then if we update that, that's the only thing that has to be updated.
Okay.
Okay.
So do not include it in here. It would be its own separate.
Well, just like I said, it'll, I'll put it together in one of these guys with a tab, and then it'll all be together for them to present.
Okay.
Okay. Um, let's see here. What we had here, we are in 214 D, cell phone usage. And that's just referencing the standalone policy there.
Okay.
There. Numbers, maybe, wait, five. In the section four.
4.2, it looks like is the next. You added in of their manual, 4.2.
Of this manual.
Of this manual.
4.3, discipline B, I just changed, uh, time card to time sheet, we had done that.
Just to be consistent.
Just to be consistent.
Okay.
It's nobody really uses a time card. Then 4.9 and 4.10, these again. And 4.9 and 4.10, these again are references to standing policies. We are just going through the manual. And there's been nothing of substance yet.
Well, I apologize to the public. I had a doctor's appointment at two o'clock. I tried to have this moved to next week and it wasn't.
The first thing with the manual is that I pulled out the drug and alcohol policy and made it a standalone. So that if we have to update it for any reason, we don't have to do the whole manual.
This is a policy you already gave us to review.
Yeah, I extracted it from, from the manual.
Perfect. Thank you.
And everything else here hasn't really been much other than I did references to these standalone policies that I received from Martha.
For like the travel reimbursement, the cell phone usage.
And we're up to, we're in section four now, 4.9 and 4.10. General driving rules and regulation policy, and then vehicle use policy. It's just a reference to look at that outside policy from the manual itself. 413 is language that I put in to indicate that the drug and alcohol policy is outside now.
Was that suggested by the prosecutor?
No, that was me looking at it and looking at the fire one and realizing that it was referencing. It just, it just didn't seem to fit in here with everything else though. It seemed, and if you look through that policy that I gave you.
I did.
I think it's, it's a better option there. I will, I told Monique, I'm going to send that to prosecutor's office to look at as well. Fire, fire is a little bit different. I don't, because theirs has to be a little bit stronger because of safety forces. So, you know, if they want to update it and take some language from there, that, that'll be up to us to look at.
So we're in 4.9.
Yeah, we're cooking.
That's, I feel like we're moving into 4.18.
4.18. That was just a title change to agree with the table of contents.
And you added in.
Yeah, and I added in provision for use covered by current version cell phone policy.
Which will be its own separate.
It is, yes.
Title of 5.2A.
5.2. This was.
That all the policies will just be like addendums to this.
I said I have the extra four, whatever, and I'll, I'll bind them together with the manual. They'll get it all in one.
That's just a better option for everyone and a lot easier streamlined. Thank you.
On a group health insurance, this was all mishmash together. So all I did was create separate titles. And like the insurance plan assessment basically talks about the township looking and trying to get the similar policies and whatnot. It's virtually the same language that was deleted because, and then just move down. Okay, 5.5, that paragraph there. It said, employee go to hospital, blah, 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 or to a facility directed by medical control. Took me like a week to find somebody who could tell me what medical control was. And.
Was it John or Jeff?
I sent it to them afterward and said, can you tell me if this is accurate?
He told me last.
And, and they, they, they said it was a, I had Jen read it. She said, yeah, that is very applicable there and just use their language. So I just basically put the definition of it in there so somebody would understand what, what it's saying is if these guys are working on something and the hospital, the physician at the hospital says, take them here, that gives them the right to do that.
He just went over that with me this morning. He told me about this conversation.
No, a lot of other little things, just putting numbers in. And 6.2, sick days.
He just spelled it out.
After, well, after paragraph E, I put in stepson, stepdaughter.
Oh.
Then.
You just might want to.
Just a huh?
And what is that after E? At the end where you're spelling everything out, you did 200, you just put four, not 400. Scroll down, it's right above 6.3. See it?
We do. Mine says 400. Now.
Now. Weird, mine doesn't.
And that, changing that to the 1200 and $400 maximum pay for cash out is in a alliance with what we did for the sergeants and patrolmen.
I have 300.
Pardon?
I have 300.
On what you're looking at. Must be a older one. Down to 6.4 vacation days, annual vacation leave, we again, to align with the other contracts, we changed after seven years of service to after five years of service. Then 6.5, payment of accrual, vacation leave, comp time. Same thing in that second paragraph there to align any sick leave hours, incentive hours in excess of 144. That aligns with the sergeant's contract. Holidays, this was the one where Brian Richter said we had to put in the required mandated by state holidays, and that's Columbus Day, Veterans Day, and Juneteenth. So in January, if we want to do the same thing, we're swapping out the what are the other days you guys swap out for day before Thanksgiving and something else?
Day after Thanksgiving, isn't it?
I think it's the day before Thanksgiving.
Well, probably day after.
It's the day after Thanksgiving, yeah.
Is it Christmas Eve is the other one?
I think it's Christmas.
So if we want to do that, we need to create a document that all the employees covered by the manual agree to. And that has to be done on an annual basis.
Oh, so we have to agree every year to do it that way, or they can choose no?
All the employees have to agree every year to do it. If one guy says no, which I don't think they will. But you can, you can thank the state for that one.
Wow.
Okay.
Just a kind of a note, just for functionality, is it, are there any way when we're doing the index at the beginning that we can make them all clickable? That's the way the fire handbook is.
Do you hyperlink it?
Yeah, I really get, so if you have like a disciplinary action, you can just click on discipline and it takes you straight to that section.
That's a good suggestion. Especially since this is not three pages.
No, it's a lengthy endeavor.
I can certainly look at that.
Thank you for that word, Lynn.
And that is all I have, unless you guys have anything else to add.
Thank you for taking the time to go through all that, make the edits.
No, it looks great.
Could it move on?
Yes.
I will just give you both an update on the the sign for the Gibson property. I was able to get ahold of Brian Becker, Donna Becker signs again. And he has agreed to provide an updated quote on that. In addition, I have a couple of outside quotes, but they're substantially more than Brian quoted. And he was hesitant to get back involved, but I talked with him. The quotes that I got outside are a thousand to 2,000 more than Brian had quoted us. And it included service department doing the installation. Outside of that, there's another option that I want to look at. And it's obtaining a steel sign, but we can do graphics on that then. And we could put a small Hinckley flag, you know, Hinckley Township with a flag on it that might look nice. Same color scheme, same thing. And I talked with Mike Baheri and they'd be able to fabricate the sign frame for it and do a wood post as well. And that should be a substantial cost saving. So once I get the prototype for that, I'll bring that to you guys and we can take a look at it and see what, if any of those options is favorable to us to present.
Now, is it a standard sign or is it a V shape like he had initially requested?
I looked at the V shape, you know, it's, it's more money, but I think if we do this, this steel one, it might be affordable for us to be able to do. Hopefully, hopefully we get to the end of the road on this one.
And it's because the request changes with what is going to be on the sign is that
That, yeah.
What has kind of slowed this?
Yeah, one that's, and when I talked with Brian there yesterday, it was just the constant revisions were they were disruptive to the actual work he was doing. He had customers and was going out and doing the work. And in the meantime, he's investing a lot of time and money into a project that kept getting stalled and other people were calling him about it. And anyway, that, that is what that is. So that's just an update on that. The other thing.
Are we thinking, I'm sorry, are you thinking that that would be by next Tuesday or not that soon?
Done or quote?
Quote with images.
I hope.
I think it's the weekend.
Sorry, the following.
I hope so. I hope so, yeah. The other thing that I wanted to mention was I went to the annexation appeal hearing. And there was no resolution there, so it will be going to the, to the court for their decision.
Is there a timeline?
Not at this time.
And was counsel present for that mediation?
Yes.
And how did he feel about things? Or you cannot say.
I mean, I could say if you're comfortable with me saying, yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Whatever you think.
It, I would say that it doesn't look promising. It's he indicated that, you know, if you find a defect, then they are able to reapply. And he said eventually they'll correct all the defects and there won't be anything to appeal about. But I did talk with the, the principal from Drug Mart there. And I pitched a case, you know, it would be, it would be nice for some goodwill, you know, that we're able to offer that. The 50% abatement is on the table and it would be nice to, for him to, he could be a hero to the town here. And, but I don't know, I don't know, you know, if they'll take that under advisement, but I yeah, let's just say, you know, I, I did what I could.
Was a jet discussed at all or brought up?
It, it was brought up at length. And I was kind of disappointed in that, that that's what was being driven home. So because the board had agreed that we weren't looking at one at this time.
Right, that has been very clear from the beginning of we need to get through the annexation.
Well.
Appeal prior to entertaining or discussing a jet. So.
I just think it's a way to maybe mediate. It's just a half discussion. I don't know what a jet looks like for us, but I think it's a way to definitely mediate.
Well, I'll tell you this, Brunswick asked for a jet for the entire corridor. And the purpose of a jet is to invite development. And I know that most of the folks in town do not want to see a lot of development. And when you have a jet, it has a board and the board is the one who sets the zoning requirements there. So we would lose that authority. So.
And I, I I don't want to go any further with it because I do not want to violate executive session, what we discussed when we met with our counsel in executive session. So I, that's, that's disappointing to hear that that was what was being discussed at length.
All right. Only other, I just have a question about the meeting that was requested for Monday.
Yes.
Can you say what that's for?
The purpose was set to you.
I saw that before. There's no detail.
That's the purpose. I don't feel that it's necessary to go into it if we're going to be going into an executive session to discuss.
Yeah, well, if you can't provide me information on what it is, I would prefer not to attend.
Provide you information. I just don't think that this is the right time. I'm still having a conversation with the prosecutor about it.
I thought we agreed that if we go to the prosecutor, we would discuss it prior to, or no?
I'm, I'm discussing it with the prosecutor in a conversation today and waiting on one more email. Just for guidance purposes.
So you will send an email letting us know what this is regarding.
I will do my best to notify you as soon as information becomes available to me.
Very well. Do you have anything else?
I have a couple of things. Trustee Ashel, did you have anything?
Yeah.
Wanted to see if we could discuss a date for a tree ceremony to kind of do like a ribbon cutting of the two trees that were planted at the historical society in honor of trustee Rhodes and trustee Chulte before weather gets bad. Do you have any dates in mind?
Have you spoken to the families?
No, I was going to notify them once we kind of determine dates. I would think that a Saturday would be ideal. So that there would be minimal conflict. And invite the community out to be a part of it.
Out of town for the next, the four, the fourth.
Yeah.
Fourth and the weekend of the 11th. I could do something during the week of the 6th.
Do you have a date that you prefer?
Like the 9th?
I'm checking my work.
Does it have to be during the day or night? What?
I would think that like that our trustee time, our like 6:30 is probably a good idea, just the families.
Is it dark though, at that point?
It's starting to get dark.
It's starting to, but it's not dark.
We have a special meeting for the bid opening on the 9th.
At 1.
Yeah, I could do anytime except that day.
I could not do the 9th in the evening. That's why I could not do the 10th. I'm going to be out of town. I can't do the 13th.
What about the 8th?
I mean, I could do. What about the 18th? I can't do the 18th. That's the Hinckley Holiday Market, but I could do the 19th.
What do you think?
I love to tell you at this time, but that far out, I have to check.
Okay. Well, why don't you get back to us about potentially? Well, why don't you get back to us about potentially the 19th?
Is that a date that would work for you as of right now, Melissa?
It will work for me.
Okay.
Do a lot on Sunday. It will work for me. I think it's a good day for families as well.
What time would you be looking at there?
It's a good question. Noon?
I'll just put noon ish.
Perfect. Then also I got outification from Mr. Carpenter at Hinckley Elementary that they are available for December, our December 5th meeting. If we wanted to make that at the Hinckley Elementary School at 9:30 in the morning, like we had previously discussed. I know that third graders are looking at our website and doing some research because typically there's a quiz that coincides with it. So that the kiddos who answer questions correctly are in the running for a cute little prize from one of our Hinckley businesses. So I talked to a third grader the other day. They were very excited about the possibility of us coming in and December 5th aligns with their schedule. So I wanted to see what you guys thought about that. So I could notify Suzanne if.
Is it, is there a reason they can't come up here to this where we're all set up already and?
I just think there's so many of them. It's easier for us and our department heads just to go there. It's traditionally been done that way.
Well, again, I need to check and just make sure before I do that. Okay?
Okay, so that's a traditional meeting day. It would just be 9:30 in the morning versus the 6:30 in the evening.
That is the day we are supposed to be announcing the winning home also.
Well, that would be perfect there. It would be perfect there.
I, I, I just, I want to throw this out there. Maybe to make a special meeting on December 5th and do something very abbreviated. So they see how government functions, but not have an actual full meeting in front of these third graders. I just think that they are going to be bored out of their minds. And if we can do something that maybe that's when, that's what we do is we announce like, thanks to you, thanks for all of you voting. And this is how democracy works, that this is the winning home. I mean, and you know, we can each say something and have a department head kind of explain what they do, but then still have our regular meeting. I just, I think they're going to be bored to tears. And this is just me speaking as the mother of an 11 year old who would be bored. I mean, you guys see him, he comes to these meetings sometimes. He sits in the back, you know, on his phone playing and he's double the age of these kids. So I just want to throw that out there as maybe a possibility. As I know it's something that, you know, was always done prior to COVID. So maybe it's something that we can continue to do, but pivot a little bit, you know? There's always room to make things better.
I, I think it's a great idea. We traditionally do try to keep it like a shorter meeting. It's not as long as a traditional meeting. They're just so excited to have the police chief and fire chief there and us there and Mike Curry there. We try to do something special just to keep it interesting for them, but it's also a meeting. But yeah, to your point, I mean, it is generally.
But that could be very, that could be very special for them of that, you know, you guys just voted on this last week, so.
Perfect timing.
So let us know. I, I know since that is a meeting day, I know that I am available that day because I try to always be available all day on Tuesday when there's a meeting. So I am available that day. Jack, if you want to get back to us and let us know about that.
Will do.
Then I just wanted to make sure we all agreed to do the chamber trees. I know they're advertising for it. We had waited for the map. Did you all get the map?
I, I did get the map.
And so we're all in agreement to move forward on that. I just want to make sure that that we're saying that publicly that we're in agreement since they are advertising it.
I am in agreement based on the map, but I did not see unless I somehow missed it. I did not see anything about decorate, you know, like themes. We talked about not wanting to be offensive to anybody, you know, that we don't want to see that, you know, there's one tree. That's maybe a roaming Catholic tree and another tree that is a Jewish tree on town, on, on, you know, township property. So I want to make sure that I didn't miss something that was sent to us. And, you know, it's going to be stuck with, you know, like the, the Santa Claus and the Nutcracker and the gingerbread, you know, the, those Christmas symbols that people see that aren't likely to offend people as much as like a specific religion.
Okay.
What are your thoughts on that?
I mean, I, I don't have a preference either way. I think that everybody celebrates differently. Some people might put blue decorations on or, you know, and that might make someone think it's more of a Hanukkah celebration.
I agree completely with you.
Can't control everything that they do. So that's why I'm asking if we're in agreement for them to move forward. Because like I said, they're advertising it.
I, I'm in complete agreement with you and I think that there are a bunch of different ways to celebrate. But what was brought up at that meeting was, you know, we used to have the nativity set on township property. And then someone complained about it. So it got moved to the church. So I am looking, I think, I think it's a great idea. I love the idea. I just want to make sure that the township is protected and we're not going to upset anyone or offend anyone. And I don't necessarily think that I have the right answer to it, but I just want to make sure let's discuss it now to put the parameters in place to try and protect the township. Those are my thoughts on it. Maybe you.
That's why I brought it up. I just wanted to hear what you guys thought about it.
What do you want to put in place?
And I mean, I probably should pull up what they were advertising.
I thought you were raising your hand line with the suggestion.
No, I'm just trying. I'm setting up, sorry.
Who was it that sent that tree drawing? Do you remember?
Mark Steron. He brought it. I don't think he emailed it.
So it says the Happy Hinckley Holidays Event on Saturday, December 2nd. Featuring treats, decorations and entertainment is free to the public. In order to pay for it, the chambers organizing a holiday tree decorating contest 50/50 fundraiser. Proceeds are split between the chamber and the winner. How it works eligible teams, families, organizations, companies sign up to decorate a tree. To be, bear with me, I just clicked on something and it went away. To be displayed in town, downtown Hinckley must reside or have a business in Hinckley. The cost is decorating teams are responsible for the cost. LED lighting only by decorating team. Each team is responsible for removing decorations. There's nothing really on here specific to what decorating looks like. And I to your point, trustee Asher, I don't know that we, if we want to put something on this, we probably need to do it sooner rather than later.
Do we also want to add in a date of when the decorations need to be removed by?
It does say on.
Does say.
Yeah, it does say within two weeks.
Of New Year's or?
You know, before the, I think it's like before the end of the December.
Says the names of participants will receive a sign and place by their tree from December 15th to the 30th.
And then it must be.
Decorating starts November 15th. The event's December 2nd. Judges finalize vote December 8th and December 15th. The winner is announced. I'm not seeing a date to take the tree down, but that looks like they, they've looked to have them up from December. Or they'll have a sign up to designate the trees on December 15th to the 30th. After they announce the winner. So no one knows who they are before judging happens.
Right, they're just going to put a number on the tree and then you're.
Oh, okay. Gotcha, gotcha.
And then the name associated with it will come after the winner is announced.
After the winner is announced, yes.
How many was there? Was there like?
Thirty. The maximum was 30, I believe.
I think they're going to get more than that. I mean, I think they're, but they're going to want more people involved in it.
I'm trying to think of language.
What are you trying to say?
Well, and I was just going to say what you said earlier really is that you want more of Christmas feel or a holiday feel. Not specific with any type of religious.
Like non-denominational?
Yeah, so no.
Non-denominational. Maybe that's it. Maybe that's just that non-denominational trees.
Okay, I can pass that information along to the chamber. And I just wanted to let you both know that I sent an email to Ohio Edison, First Energy. We've got lights out at Ridge and Bellas as well as 606 and Kellogg. Waiting for those lights to be fixed. So just so the public knows, we are working on that. And then I just lastly wanted to follow up and see if anyone had heard from Columbia Gas on those questions that the residents had.
Yeah, I just.
Last meeting.
He just texted me earlier today that they're preparing answers on them. I think you probably saw the responses from in-house, yeah.
Yeah, but it was that Columbia Gas component that we were waiting on.
Yeah.
Okay. And then did you guys discuss the Google Drive?
We did.
And what did we decide with that?
We're going to move forward on a test case scenario because we already have one established. Going to touch base with Martha regarding digital records, the retention policy on digital records, which we said probably should have already happened because we already have records requests that we have completed digitally.
Yep, electronically.
Electronically, digitally, sorry.
And Lynn's getting some additional information.
I, I need to learn more about the Google Drive and what's the capabilities and what kind of storage that brings up as far as the cloud storage? And if, you know, what are our limits as far as the amount without having to pay extra, basically?
Like a Dropbox has a fee associated when there's more storage.
I'm telling you with PDS, thousands. Because I have it in my own Dropbox, it's thousands and I've only got like five gigabyte of storage.
So, and we're going to do like videos separate, things that eat up a lot of storage would be.
Well, the videos are all on the wonderful, the ones that we've recorded for the last hour long, we've been doing it almost a year or if not over a year are all available on YouTube. We just don't link to them from the website. We keep three months on the website.
But I think what we're, had somebody requested like somebody who was involved in a traffic stop asked for body cam video. That would be a video that you would have to provide.
Oh, okay.
Not in Google. Just send that in an email.
So what are the parameters of this? I mean, is it moving forward that and what are our?
It's going to be a case.
Frequent.
Yeah, case by case basis, based on, and what, what Suzanne was saying was if it's going to be normally on a request, if it's more than two emails that have to go out, we're going to put it on a Google Drive. And if it's frequently requested, we're going to put it on the Google Drive. But again, we have to, we have to, I have to figure it out.
What's the definition of frequent?
More than twice.
More than twice.
I think frequent is more than more than twice, but that's just my opinion. I thought we were going to wait for all the whole board to be collectively together to make the decisions and have conversation about this.
Okay, do you want to have any further conversation on it?
Well, I just, I don't know that it's, are procedures changing secondary to this? I mean, when Suzanne gets a records request that asks for, for instance, the survey results from the Kimball survey that we just sent out. Is she just supposed to just put them into the drive or does the request still come to the board? Because all requests according to sunshine laws come to us. Suzanne is not supposed to determine what records we do or don't have.
I never got the records request for the trash survey. They, I never even saw it. They fulfilled it in the front office and that was the experiment that they put on the Google Drive.
Why, why, she's part of the administration in the office.
Okay, so the survey itself, but what if they were asking for correspondence of the survey? Or correspondence as it pertained to anything that had to do with it?
Involving the trustees, then you would have to respond.
So I, I mean, I just, I think we need to really fine tune the procedures to make sure that we're following the procedures.
I think that we should, I think that all three trustees, the zoning inspector, the fiscal officer, I think everybody should have access to the Google Drive. So we know what's on there. So we know if we need to add anything based on a records request.
And do we, or do you agree that frequent is two times?
Would I say, I, I was a proponent, put everything in there. It's a filing cabinet. And then they've already been provided as a public record. So they're out in the wild anyway. Anybody wants to look at it, set everything to view only. That was mine, but because of issues, she's not sure about capacity and whatnot. We boiled it down to, you know, if you've got something out there and somebody's asked for it and, and instead of somebody having to bother the township again, put another records request in. If they have access to it and it's there, let them look at it there.
So the access is to everyone?
I, why not?
I'm just asking, I don't know what you.
Anyone, anyone who would, yes, Lynn.
I'm not, like I said, I, we have to do more research on it. I have to do more research on it, so.
The access is to anyone who, anyone who come, who contacts us for a records request would have received access to it. It's not this like free for all, anybody can just log into Google Drive. They would specifically have to ask for information that is on the Google Drive.
I want you to sit on that one.
Okay, I'd, like I said, I'm just trying to understand the parameters. I wasn't here for the conversation.
Um, I think I know what you're about to ask with that. If we're done with this conversation, are we done with the Google Drive or do you still have more concerns?
I didn't have anything else to add.
Okay. Um, I think I know why you're holding up that trash survey. And that is the results have been tallied from the trash survey. But can we still receive additional surveys just for informational purposes? So that it gives us a better idea of who would want to opt out? Is that, am I, am I on the?
And what do I do with it?
How many extras did you get? One?
So far.
People have contacted me and asked me, they said, oh, I forgot to send that in. And I'm like, well, you can still do it because if you're going to want to opt out, that's, I was really hoping we would get additional back. Because the results are what they are. We already have publicly addressed the results, so it's not going to alter those results in any ways. But it's going to help us when we are bidding this next year to have a better understanding of how many people actually want to opt out. Because I can guarantee it's more than the 67 that we got back.
What I thought was interesting too, if I can add something to that.
No, you're done. Yes.
If I could add something, the amount of people that replied with the survey being sent back to us. The, there was probably 67 people that have opted out of the 276 that we got. Of those 67 people, the people that said that, yes, I applied to opt out. The second question was, do, am I in favor of maintaining a single trash hauler? Thirty-three percent or 31.3%, something like that, 31 to 32% of the people that said they've opted out before were still in favor of a single trash hauler, which I found to be interesting. Just, just that blanket, you know.
And I spoke last week.
It is funny, why would you? That's funny.
I, I spoke to Gail last week, you know why? Because.
You're going to be forced to do it, then it's going to be cheaper.
No, they're. No, they're opting out. They don't pay.
They, because what I have heard, the feedback I've heard is they like the fact that there's less cars, you know, less trucks on the road and the trash cans are out, you know, same day. So. Yeah. Do you want the, do you have something to add?
I'm, I'm okay. And then, uh, so what do I do with this one? Do I?
I would collect them because it has data in it.
Do I do a separate log?
Separate logs, say surveys received after deadline.
Survey results for the comprehensive plan audit.
I didn't get, I don't remember, I don't remember.
I don't think we took any after that.
Yeah, I don't think we did.
Yeah.
But, you know, this, this is.
We're not, not, not accepting it as part of the survey, but for collecting data.
Okay.
To, to.
I know we did with the audit also. We did save them. They're still in the envelopes. They were not included.
You know what? That's right. They, we were. Okay. I.
We kept them because it was a record that we received. So we had to keep them, but they did not get filtered in with the audit results.
Okay.
So I would say if you do a separate file.
Okay.
So that we don't have to worry about those being, you know, um, kind of muddying the numbers that you already crunched for us. Yeah.
Thank you for your work on the survey results. I know that wasn't an easy task.
I love, just ask Monique. I love numbers.
Yes, you do. And a little simple reminder that opt-out officially begins Monday morning.
How many opt-outs?
Monday morning.
Tuesday, what?
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning. Wednesday morning at nine AM. That's why you are still here.
How many opt-outs do we have openings?
I will find out the official word by Tuesday.
Okay.
So I have to get the official number of residents in Hinckley Township, Ohio. By then, that's what I did last year. So that's what I'm going to do this year. Because that's as close as I can get to it. So.
The day before.
Um, one more thing, but I just.
Why do you have candy?
Oh, for the Hinckley Halloween.
Oh, very nice.
Anything else?
That's it. On.
It's gone. I forgot.
Do you have anything?
Oh, I just remembered. I'm sorry, guys. There was, if, if anybody is either hasn't gotten their trash or recycling pickup, there was a truck broken down on Center Road when I was coming back in here today. Um, and they were working on it. So I don't know if it's a recycling truck or a trash truck, but it is, it was right at the top of Center Hill beyond like in between the two hills before you go to state. So if anybody's missing their pickup, that might be why.
Mine was done before nine AM. So thank you.
We have two more quick ones, then we'll be done. One is we just paid for that OTA training and the Township Association paid for it for everybody.
Oh my gosh, I saw that. I saw that.
I know.
So maybe we can get our money back. Call Capital One, cancel it. Secondly, I don't know if you saw it, we were somewhere, I heard about this a month ago. Some guy came up to us and says, you're from Hinckley? I guess we will be the center, best place in the world to watch the solar eclipse that's coming up. And that's why you're getting emails from EMA about it because the entire county is doing a plan because they're expecting so many people to come here.
That's why I forwarded it off to our department heads today. So I went through the email and there.
It should be crazy. You might want to leave that week. I don't know.
Run tight, your house.
The guy that was telling us, we were at a doctor's appointment for my wife and she, she invited him over. So he's parking in a driveway.
So we're all going to your house? That's what I heard.
Anyway.
I will talk to the OTA and see if we can get some type of a refund for that since we paid for it preemptively. We're good planners right here.
Anything else? Anything out here? I will move to adjourn at four fourteen PM.
Second.
Second by Ashel, in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.